Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. It is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. There's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open. As a reminder, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Gentlemen, originally, we were going to have Lake Street on the agenda up first, but I'm going to wait until Mr. Menard gets here because it kind of, that impacts him. So if it's all right with you, I'm going to go to number eight, Buzzards Bay Coalition. Bring Mr. Decker up. This way then you can head out and appreciate what you're going to do tonight. It is in reference to a project going on on South Main Street.
South Main Street, yes. Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Alan Decker with Buzzards Bay Coalition. And that's exactly right. This is a little over 18-acre parcel on South Main Street that the Coalition does own at this point, having acquired it last December. Before I get into too much, I know I sent in a couple of maps. I actually have, Mr. Chair, additional resource coverage maps. If those are of interest to the Board, I'm happy to hand those up to you at this time.
Sure.
So on that, on that first map, what you're looking at, everything inside the red boundary is the conservation restriction that I'm with you about this afternoon. That actually totals about 17 acres because even though it, so I did say that everything inside the red line, what I neglected to say is the area marked "private lane," that is not actually in the conservation restriction. That's a paper street at this point. It's called La Cire's Lane on mapping, but that property is, or the private lane area is laid out separately and will remain outside the conservation restriction itself. Everything else, Lot 34, the large parcel, and then Lots 63 and 64 are in the conservation restriction. As you can see, we own, we own property immediately south. What we intend to do with this property long-term is open it up for public access. That is one of the elements in the conservation restriction that will be held by the Conservation Commission. I was with them May 28, and they voted to sign the conservation restriction, be the holder over the Coalition's long-term ownership, which continues a partnership we've had with the town on multiple properties, particularly the Acushnet Sawmill, which, not understating, is one of our, or it is the most popular of our reserves that we have, Watershed Ride. A lot of people there, a lot of time, although I did ride by it this afternoon, and there was only, there were only two cars in the parking lot at this moment in the rain. But in any case, town holds the CR through the Concom on us there. Would be the same here. In fact, this could be viewed as, as a coastal version of the Acushnet Sawmill. We want to get people on this property. We want to do environmental education. We want to have community events on the property. And it's not overstating it that we want to make the existing barn right up by the street, if you know the property, it's shown on that map there. That barn is going to stay in place. We're going to fix it up and use it, and we'd love to have things potentially as, as interesting as a farmer's market housed in that area. That is part of a special use, part of the CR. You'll see the special use area is actually delineated by hand. It is on the survey, but delineated by hand on the third map in, on the, in the pack that I just handed up. It allows for the, the existing right-of-way to the property to the north to continue. But that special use area includes the barn, would allow for parking and other uses for, for events that are held, that are held on the property. Much of what is shown on the aerial air photo has actually been removed. There was a house at the end of the paper street, La Cire's Lane, that has been taken down and removed, and the area around the existing barn has been cleaned up significantly. None of, none of that stuff that shows is there anymore. So we want to connect to, the trail network to our property to the south. There are social trails on this property. We want to formalize a trail network, make it accessible. We're reserving, as you may have seen in the CR, the ability to place a dock and a floating pier, working with the Concom in their regulatory capacity to, to do that, if we're able to locate funding and such. Our principal interest in actually getting involved in owning this property is there's a very small but important tributary that runs to, to the river estuary. You can see it work its way back into the property. It's in dire need of habitat restoration work, and that's, that's really our long-term interest here, is to rework that, rework that area and allow the stream to be a stream and not have, not be channelized and controlled in the fashion that it currently is. Again, public access, access to the coastline. We want people to feel like they can launch from here, explore the river estuary now that a lot of the cleanup has occurred on the, on the New Bedford side, on the Acushnet side, Fairhaven, down, further down. But just kayak access, other non-motorized boats. We're not, we're not going to put in a ramp or anything like that for motorized, motorized watercraft. But just much like our other reserves here in Acushnet and throughout the other towns in the Watershed, the action tonight, as I said, the Conservation Commission has already voted to, to hold the conservation restriction and assign the, the restriction document. I'm looking for your vote of approval that this placement of this conservation restriction is in the public interest and ask for a vote to, to say as such, and actually sign the conservation restriction tonight, this afternoon. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I had heard, obviously, I don't think that's the case, but at one point, were you guys thinking about, like, building a house on that lot? Or did I mishear that?
Um, we weren't talking about building a, building a house on this, on the property this part of the CR.
Okay.
We did, we did acquire, as part of the larger acquisition from the former property owner, we did acquire a smaller house lot that we now have on the market to sell. It is not part of the CR property, but we would, we're actually, it's, it's not germane to the CR, but it's important to note that that house has a, a failed or a poor septic system. We are replacing that septic system with nitrogen-reducing system, and that upgrade will be part of the sale to, to a new owner of the property.
Nice.
Yep.
Yep. All right. Gentlemen, any questions?
I do not.
Mr. Henkley.
Right.
Is there a motion to approve the CR?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, I do have, actually, just an updated page that, that has the select board on it. If you don't mind, I'll, there was a small typo in the language at the top referencing the board as a select board rather than formerly the Board of Selectmen, so I wanted to get that corrected. I caught it at the last moment. So, thank you very much.
And then Sidney, what I can do is, I'm happy to notarize, I'm notary, I can notarize the signature, and then I'll scan it and email to you in the morning so that you have it.
Okay, I'll let you do it. I'm also notary, but whatever's easy.
Can you, can you do that, though, if you're part of this agreement? I don't know if you can notarize your document as a notary. So you might be better off.
Sidney can go do it now.
That's absolutely fine.
They might question that, being a notary. I know a little bit, and you can't.
Sidney, take it.
Just let her stamp that.
If she, yeah, that's absolutely fine. All right, absolutely fine.
Very good. Well, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. We'll see how that works out. We're going to go back to the top. You're, you're done.
I know.
Listen, I'll talk to Scott.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we're going to go back to Lake Street Improvement. We've got Scott Daggett. Jokingly told Scott that this is the meeting where he officially gets appointed as the ambassador to Lake Street.
Do you kind of know something?
Yeah, Perga King.
For those who do not know, Scott, Scott Daggett has been a real driver of improving Lake Street, along with his committee, Gary Coppa, Jameis Gamache.
And a new member, Hilda.
And yep, and we'll have a new member soon. But Scott really has been nonstop with his passion and vigor to improve Lake Street. You know, we, we put in some structural improvements there, safety improvements, thanks to the work of the DPW and Dan Menard and that crew with guardrails and better parking and, you know, some aesthetic improvements, a walking trail, which is, you know, continues to still get activity there, and, you know, the nice stone wall. So, you know, I think we've got some really good things going on. I talked to some folks with Boy Scouts, I think they're going to reach out to you about doing some work on, you know, the parking area to put some plantings and just kind of improve the aesthetics there. So with that, the long-awaited news on the dredging of the weeds, and so I'll turn it over to you, Scott, just to kind of recap the project, where it stands, what we anticipate next, and then, Dan, we're going to need a little coordination with you when we get those weeds out of the ponds, figure that out. So that's why I wanted you here for this. So thank you. All right, Scott.
So just for the record, Scott Daggett, Lake Street Improvement Committee, along with Mr. Gary Coppa, Jameis Gamache, who is not here, and we have a new member who will be coming on by the name of Hilda. I apologize for not knowing her last name, but we met with her on Saturday, and she's very enthusiastic about, you know, about the outlook of what we propose to do. So, you know, another member coming on with, you know, as much of a passion as what we three have in, you know, taking care of that gem that we have in town is great. So just as a recap, so initially what we had proposed, we had proposed to do herbicide use. That's been shelved for various reasons. Now we have CND Underwater coming in. They're going to come in with an eco-harvester, which is typically a small boat with two pinchers on the front that rotate against each other and pull the weeds, and they're going to be pulling the weeds at the root. We have gone exhaustively through the Conservation Commission, eventually getting approval. We have an order of conditions. It's about anywhere from 24 to 26 items. Nothing too strenuous there. It seems like it's all above board. Everything that we can go ahead and, and address, I don't think will have any issues at all. No need to, you know, to seek any kind of an amendment to that. So, you know, we, we approved or we accepted what they recommended for an order of conditions, and that's what we're going to go with. Next step is to contact Jeff over at CND Underwater to try to set some guidelines in place as to where we're going to have our dewatering station, where we're going to have our storage. We're going to coordinate with DPW for hauling the dewatered weeds back to the town yard. I hope to give Jeff a call sometime this week or early next week because I know we have a target date of sometime in August when the weeds are at full growth. Just a little bit of an update on that small pond. So I was out there fishing last weekend. The biomass area that's in the northwest corner sadly is about three times larger than it was last year. When you look at it in a boat, it looks like a big mud island. There's a couple areas that are growing closer to the street. So speaking to Jeff a few times, we have a plan of attack for that. We have to make sure that it's feasible. We've got to make sure that we're able to get the mini excavator on a small barge. That's what he proposes to do. The thing that may be tricky there is the boat ramp is a little shallow. Hopefully, if we're able to launch what he proposes to do, then we, you know, can go ahead and try to manage that. We also have to figure out what we have currently for a budget so that I can inform Jeff based on his scope of work, how many days he plans on being out there, and what he proposes to impact on a daily basis. The last, the last quote that I had was around $5,500 per acre. I don't know if that price has changed recently. I haven't spoken to him about that, but in this upcoming phone call, I will be asking him, you know, what his current rates are, if they're the same as they were last year when he proposed those rates. And once I figure out a budget, then I can give him an idea of, you know, how much time he can actually dedicate to us based on this one acre per day removal of the weeds. And now that we're going to have him go in there with a mini excavator and remove some of these biomass areas from the smaller pond, that might be, that's going to be an additional cost. Again, I got to narrow down what the figures are for that because I don't want him to primarily focus on that. I want him to be able to accomplish what we wanted to do Phase One, which is both the north pond and south pond along the street. My thinking and the rest of the committee's thinking about that is it's good for optics. People driving up and down the street will see the boat in action. They'll know that the money that was voted in during town meetings originally is being well-spent for what we intended to spend it for. People who go there fishing will see that, you know, the weeds are getting pulled up, and it's a little bit easier for them to fish. So Phase One, we plan on doing both sides of the street, as much as Jeff can do with whatever schedule he's going to give us. And then if we've got a little bit of time left over that he can dedicate to us, then we're going to try to remove some of those biomass areas from the smaller pond.
Great. What I would suggest, Scott, is we get with a cable, cable TV or cable crew, videotape and document this whole thing. I think it would be really good educational. I'd urge you and Dan to invite your chance from the Conservation Commission in New Bedford and maybe get Jamie Pond from DPW in New Bedford to watch this exercise. Because if we can prove it, that it works, and proof of concept, then I think that might be worth a conversation with the city to say, hey, should we jointly look at purchasing an, you know, some type of apparatus that we can constantly, and I think it proves the city to be part of this as well. So I think, you know, our mindset was, let's just own it and do it now just to get it moving, because if we try to wait for the city or other things to, to happen, it'll never get done. And even with us taking owner, you know, driving this process, it took way longer than it should have. So I think, let's use this as a, an opportunity to then go back to the city and say, hey, look, we got to partner on this thing. As much as we'd like to do it on our own, you know, we've done the, we were the first angel investor for this thing. We need the city's help moving forward, or maybe it's a discussion on turning over the, the water to us. I don't know. But so, if you guys can coordinate, Dan, if you're, you're with that, and, you know, make sure, Scott, you bring Dan and his team into the conversation when you meet with this guy, Jeff, and then we'll make sure that Jamie, you know, on the procurement for me to contract and all that stuff. So Sidney, if you wouldn't mind just putting notes down, get from Jamie for budget, what we have in the budget, and get that to Scott. And, you know, you can work with Sidney on trying to get this stuff organized.
Yeah. And what I'll do is I'll share with Dan a copy of the order of conditions, which spells out the guidelines that we have to follow based on what the Conservation Commission recommended so that he's aware, you know, of, you know, the dewatering stage and area and how we're going to manage it.
And all that stuff, what I understand, is really rich. So, Dan, you might be able to use it for compost.
Oh, definitely. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be compost.
Yeah, it's very, it's very rich in nutrients, so it will be, it will be useful. So I've been very transparent with New Bedford Concom between Chance and I. I forward him the notice of intent and the order of conditions, and, you know, I've been keeping him in the loop. So on day one, what I would like to do, I'm hoping to be available on day one when we get the boat in the water. I'd like, you know, for Chance to be out there so that he can see, you know, what's going on. Another thing that Chance had recommended, which, which I think was a really great idea, is to get public awareness out there. Whether it's myself.
We've got our social media guy here, Mr. Henkley. I'm sure he's moving.
Yeah, yeah. You know, whether it's myself, or, you know, me and, you know, one of the selectmen, or somebody from Conservation, you know, TV, radio, you know, obviously, you know, all things cushion it. I'm on there telling people, keeping them informed. But to give people public awareness as to what we're doing, why we're doing it, and why it's important that we're doing it.
So why don't we do this, Scott? Once you get a date, when they're going to be over there, we should get the Board there, the other interested parties will do like a little press kickoff. You know, we'll get it videotaped, and we'll use that to promote it. So just get us a date, and I'm sure, I know we'll, we'll be there and we'll get some hype around it. You know, I know there was a couple city councils in New Bedford who were helpful, you know, Linda Morad and Maria Giesta. So I'm sure they would like to attend as well. So let's, let's hype it up and make it, make it something.
Sure.
Yes. Mr. Jim?
Yeah.
I was, when Scott was talking, and we, Scott and I had conversations that have passed about how much it was with the dredging machine. I think it's actually a pretty decent deal for what the accomplishment, what the goal is, right? I don't know what we have for that budget. That's, that's what's a little disheartening to me. And when we went over the warrant, I noticed with CPC that we didn't appropriate for more funding all HD.
We had about 85 grand. We didn't spend, we went back for another set. We had 75 initially. We spent a lot of that on the improvements, and we went back for some additional money, which we haven't touched. Yeah, yeah. So we've got the money.
So I have to look, because I have a list of all the old articles. I don't remember seeing a decent amount of money there, but neither here or there, hopefully, we do have, like you said, Scott, at least a decent allotment of money to get out there and do those, the front sections, right? I mean, it looks horrible just driving through, and there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, I, I can't thank you and then Mr. Coppa and the other folks that's on these, on this committee, but, you know, you've been extremely instrumental and not giving up on this project. Every time I talk to you, your passion's always there. I think the community's very fortunate to have somebody like you, Mr. Coppa, and the rest of these. We're going to make an appointment to another person to the Lake Street Improvement Committee, but from my heart to you, I don't believe that we would be as far and as advanced as we are without you, Scott. So to you, thank you very much for everything, your efforts you've put into this. You, Mr. Woner says you're the ambassador, right? You've been extremely instrumental to make sure that you stay on top of it and keep pushing forward. So for that, I thank you, because I speak to an abundance of residents, and they're really looking forward to being able to get out there. Everyone I speak to says, I was just in my small boat, and I can't even move. It's, it's that bad. I said, is it that bad? And they said, it's that bad. So, you know, I think it'll be a big accomplishment if we can actually get those ponds cleaned up. And I think there's a boatload of people out there, no pun intended, that are looking forward to having those, those lakes cleaned up, including myself. So again, kudos to you. We couldn't do it without you. So I'm glad that you have the passion, and you continue to have the passion to drive this project forward. And you'll always have my support for funding, you know. Doing it, I think doing it phase is a smart way of doing it, right? Hopefully, we can get a good chunk of it cleared up from the roadway anyway, you know, to a certain spot. And then next year, we'll hopefully go to CBC and get some more money to, to do something. If that's where the funding source is going to come, maybe we can do some GoFundMe page or whatever it may be. I don't know other ways to fund this thing, but possibly we can do something like that. And I think Mr. Woner is spot on, talking about the city in New Bedford. I talked about it a while back when we were talking about this project. In the old water minutes, interministerial agreement that we have with the city in New Bedford, which I have a copy of, they're responsible for those lakes, right? And they kind of ditched it in more advanced interministerial agreements. They knocked that out of there, but it was there one time. They are responsible for the care of those ponds. So I would hope that the city would be open to, you know, as Mr. Woner says, maybe our second angel investor to kick up a little bit of funds to help us out with this project. So.
All right. Mr. Henkley?
I think Mr. Gasper and Mr. Woner said it all, but I will reiterate exactly what they said. I feel exactly the same way. The fact that this has taken this long and you haven't slowed down one bit is very admirable, and thank you. I think just seeing what we've done so far, you know, between the parking lot renovations and everything else at the DPW, and you spearheaded, I drive by there every weekend, and the parking lot's full. People are out there enjoying it and utilizing it already, and it's not even at its full potential yet. So to see that happening before we get to the final stages of it is really, really good to see, and I look forward to seeing what's going to happen when it's done.
Right. And I know Sidney's done a lot of help behind the scenes in facilitating and getting information. So continue to work, continue to work with Sidney on that to help. If you have questions, Sidney's your point of contact. We can be the liaison on this project between us and the Board. That'd be great.
Mr. Jim, if I can make one more update, too. I don't know if you saw, but the beautification committee is having a townwide cleanup this weekend, and it looks like the Boy Scouts volunteered to clean up Lake Street. So I know you're out there every week. I'll be able to take this weekend off, maybe supervise a little bit instead of getting your hands dirty for a change. But it looks like Troop 11 is planning on going out there Saturday morning to do a big cleanup with whatever's out there. So it's nice to see.
That's good. We were out there a couple weeks ago.
Great, yeah.
With Sloman, Menard, his son, and a few other volunteers.
All right.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good times.
All right. With that said, we've got a resident, Hilda Jacob, who would like to be appointed to the Lake Street Improvement Committee. She lives there. Motion to appoint, means a motion to appoint Hilda Jacob. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, Mr. Gasper. Motion carries. Just notify Hilda by email that she was appointed, and she has to get sworn in. You know, we've got another member. So thank you. Again, Gary, thank you for the work, and please extend to Jameis and others. Really good stuff. All right. Next item, letter of resignation, Rebecca Soka?
Soika.
Soika. Unfortunately, she's moving and needs to step down. So a motion to accept with regret. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make another comment on that.
Yeah.
I had mentioned at our last meeting that we did have a letter of interest on file for a Conservation Commission member. I did reach out to her to find out if she was still interested, and she wanted some more information. So she is planning on going to their meeting on Wednesday beforehand to speak with some of the members and sit there and see what it entails. And she's going to let me know, and once she makes the decision, I'll let you know if we can agree next time.
Thank you. In regards to Conservation Commission, there's a lot going on. We've had a couple people step down. And so what I'd like to do is call a joint meeting, an executive session. Jamie, I'm assuming we can do that with the Concom after town meeting? I think, you know, it just seems like there's a lot going on there. And not throwing shade on anybody, but this is example of Lake Street. I think there's 11 meetings that Scott had to go to in order to get this NOI. I think we got to, we got to help that commission be able to make decisions and make sure things get done. So Jamie, right, we can do a joint executive session meeting? Would that be the appropriate way to go over operations, personnel, all of the above?
Well, let's put it on the agenda, and I'll talk to council.
All right. Yeah, so, gentlemen, if you're, bottom line is a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission at our first meeting after town meeting that we have, because I think it's an important, it's an important function, but something that should not be taking an inordinate amount of our time. So, all right. Next item is ambulance bill abatement request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve run number 250221-1111. I don't know if this needs to be included, AFE MSD in the amount of $325.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. Next item is from Dana at the golf course to recommend a hiring Taylor Olivera and as a beverage cart responsibilities. And Mr. Lamontaine is a bag boy trainee. They brought some personnel over there. I was there golfing Friday, and there was, you know, the beverage cart wasn't attended to, so I think... to, so like, it's an opportunity to properly staff it, they have to leave money on the table there, so there'd be a motion to approve these hires.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to correct the record, I think she was gonna be a beverage cart and a counter staff or something like that, so I just told, you know, for both?
Yep.
So a motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, great. Next, interdepartmental transfers, Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, from my memo, you can see I addressed both the interdepartmental transfers and the reserve fund requests coming in the next section. On the departmental transfer request, when looking with the accounting staff, looking at where we're going to need, definitely need transfers are the police overtime, fire overtime, and legal. What you see are very back-of-the-envelope estimates right now, because we are looking to finalize, for example, with fire, there's IOD payments that are coming in, that will have to be journal entry into the, take care of this. Police, we are looking at existing appropriation to transfer among the police, but definitely the two overtime lines will be over, and so we wanna prepare the board for that, and we will be coming in at the end of the year for the transfers. Legal, it looks like about thirty thousand.
What's that all about? What's contributing to that?
Uh, number one, it's, when we process it, we are processing both the PJ Keating and we are processing the normal legal, the labor relations ones, which are negotiations, as I said, these are all estimates. We have approximately fifteen thousand within the legal budget, but not particularly for legal counsel. It is for such things as-
Tax title.
-real estate, tax title, that can be moved around, but I just wanna let the board know, and these-
So no action is needed, this is just to get ahead, correct?
No, yep, and you can see where we have some sources of funding for these over and deficits. I would ask that if the board wants any input prior to, we can go over this. As you can see, these are big numbers, in that they're not the five thousand or seven thousand that in the past we have cobbled together to do this.
Well, we've got a, fortunately we've got a board member who's pretty good with numbers and finances, so, Mr. Gasper, if you've got the stomach for it after town meeting, if you wanna-
I'd be more than happy to.
Put your eyes on this stuff and-
I'm actually very curious to look at council.
Come back to us with your-
I'm very curious about legal bills. I know what I've been doing behind the scenes, and it hasn't been to, I know some of the deficits we've seen in previous years, and I've been doing a lot of that legwork myself, so I'm dying to see some of those bills, to see where they really, the composition of those bills are.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item number six. He's good. Reserve fund transfer.
Oh, yeah. In the reserve fund transfer, I'm looking to transfer four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars, and this was to update the time clocks. The clocks we have now are not going to be supported, and they are very old, and we are looking to put four in.
Do any of these, like what we're trying to do, match up with the FOBS, like when you check in?
Actually, it will eliminate a lot of the FOBS we're using and go straight to the IDs. The FOBS, you remember-
Not the FOBS, the IDs, rather, that's what I meant to say, like some of you-
Yeah, it's all-
Will they all communicate with each other, right?
Yes.
Like when you walk in the door?
Yes, and with payroll.
And you take your punch in and blah, blah, blah.
And with payroll.
All right, that's good. This isn't an expenditure you could take from IT?
Uh, not right now, and, because IT is still spending through a number of the appropriations.
I, I'm just asking the question because I know it's, this one's forty-seven hundred bucks, whatever it is, but we have the other bigger deficits, police, fire are the two biggest ones, right, and you're talking about trying to make up and cover that shortfall, so, you know, we're back to the scraping pennies thing, so. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve reserve fund transfer in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars for said purpose.
All right, the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, next one is police antenna.
Uh, I'm looking for twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-one This is to finalize the lightning strike antenna saga. The, a lot of the equipment was, that we're replacing was at the end of their, its life. We've had multiple conversations, the chief has been great at ratcheting out more and more money from the insurance company, this would be able to finish off the whole thing. Their original offer was considerably less than what we got because of the age of the equipment, but as you know, we need this, and I'm asking for a reserve fund transfer because I'm not sure if we'll be using some of the existing police appropriation to cover the overtime, and this is just a stopgap where we can get it paid now.
Mr. Jim? Yes, sir. This is, so if you read the chief's note, and I've heard Jeremy Fons has been instrumental on working with the insurance company from past conversations, so he's gonna, he's looking for this from a reserve fund transfer standpoint, but he's also gonna put that into the claim with the insurance company, see if he can get this money reimbursed, right?
Uh, yes, but I mean, this has been, I must say, between Jeremy and the chief, they've done everything but threaten the insurance company to get revisions, and this is about the fourth or fifth revision that they've got, where they've got more and more money. It's been a, a great effort on their part.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-one cents, as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item, gentlemen, we've got a, we've been getting a number of letters regarding school committee decisions and school budgets, and, you know, just ramping up to town meeting, you know, people are, who are supporters of the school, naturally concerned, but the only thing I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna read each letter, I think it's really just more asking the board to intervene or get involved, and, you know, I can't speak for anybody but myself, and you guys have your own opinion on this stuff, but, you know, it's, our role and the finance committee's role is to provide guidance to the finance committee on, you know, budgetary items, what the town can, how much the town can and cannot spend, and, you know, the schools get, I think north of fifty percent, well over fifty percent of our total revenue, and once they go through that process, it's ultimately up to the school committee and working with their administration to decide how that money is spent, not for me, which is again, to speak me, not for me to get involved in what should go, who should, you know, be impacted and not, I think generally, the approach that we've taken in town hall of this, things that we can do that don't impact the residents directly to make those decisions, whether it's, you know, combining a position that doesn't require a lot of, doesn't impact the overall operation, or, or looking for efficiencies, I always think that's always the first step in any budget process, especially when you're getting squeezed, so, just wanna make it clear to those who are watching, the residents, we've got elected school committee members, ultimately it's them, they're the ones who decide how they spend the money that's provided for them. The school commit, the finance committee and the board, our guidance is, deviating from that, or, or using one-time dollars to fund operating expenses is a disaster. I wouldn't do it in my household, and I don't think anybody else here would do it in their household, so that's just my, my opinion, gentlemen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've been reaching out to everybody that's been sending emails in, I do have a couple left that I have to respond to, but I've actually met up with a couple of them in person and had some conversations, and I've been doing a lot of clarification on how municipal finances work, to touch base on what you just mentioned about one-time funds being a slippery slope, because it's just gonna compound and cause even bigger issue next year, and also explaining what you just said to people about how elected bodies of government work, and I think a lot of people weren't really sure on the roles that each committee or board has, so I've been spending a lot of time explaining and clarifying that, but I also wanna throw out there, if anybody still has questions, they can reach out to me directly, I'm very, very easy to get ahold of, and because I happen to be active on social media, if you guys are all right with it, I, I have no problem, you know, taking the lead on it, seeing as-
You're a better man than I am.
They can, they can reach out to me directly a lot easier, without, you know, going through phone numbers and everything, they can just shoot me a message, and I've been pretty much an open book in regards to finances and how they work, and the path that has got us to this point, and, you know, ultimately, the, the number one biggest problem comes really from the, the reduction of chapter seventy money year over year, and I've been telling people that they need to reach out to their local reps and try to get their voice behind that as well, to tackle it on a state level, because we cannot control, we cannot add huge amounts of revenue year over year to solve this problem. This isn't a black and white issue, this is a, a very complex issue with a lot of moving parts, and a lot of people seem to be receptive to that now that they understand, and that's pretty much it, but if anybody wants to reach out to me directly, I can, I can answer as many questions as possible. Mr. Gasper?
Yeah, no, I, I just, I, I, there's a lot of rumors going around about what's gonna occur at town meeting, and I would just say to the public, I strongly discourage using one-time revenue, such as stabilization, for budgetary operating costs, right, because with the following year, you're gonna raise and appropriate whatever was spent the previous year, so if you spend an additional five hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars for the people that are out there that aren't familiar with what happens is, the following year when we do a tax class, we determine the, the assessed values of properties, there's a computation that happens with the amount you spend, so that amount's gonna get added to your tax bill. It's, it's never an easy solution when, you know, you have revenue shoffalls, but I've been talking to the community and FinCom and school committees for a number of years, letting them know that this is how much money the town has every year for budgetary purposes, right, and we all have to try to do what we can to work within that confinement of revenue, which to most people, they don't know, but we're spending eight hundred to a million dollars a year. Figure it out, where are you gonna be in fifteen or twenty years from now, where your tax bill would be, right, so using one-time revenue is a recipe for disaster, as far as I'm concerned. I, I totally discourage it, because you can take five hundred thousand dollars from stabilization, but the following year, we're gonna hit you in the tax bill, and that's exactly where it's gonna hit you, is in the tax bill, and it's not what we're doing, it's the process. I mean, that's where it comes down to.
For nothing, there's a, you know, an air quality issue that went before the voters, and, you know, that issue's not gonna go away, right, so if we start going into stabilization, and then we have to go to a bonding situation, we don't wanna reduce our bond rating, and that makes that project that less, that less attainable, you know, and so we gotta stay, we gotta stay disciplined and focused within the structure and making sure that we use sound accounting principles and budgeting principles.
So that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, and I, I, Mr. Hinckley might be able to answer it, but I do talk to people, and I have people that watch social media for me, and they, and they inform me about what's going on on social media, and somebody was, I guess, on social media saying that the town only needs to have five percent of their fiscal year budget in stabilization. That's not true. As Mr. Warner just alluded to, the rule of thumb is ten percent is the rule of thumb for a good bond credit rating, right, and that's what you really look at to maintain, is that ten percent, so if you were to take it down to a level below that, when we, if we were to go out and borrow money, that affects your credit rating, which in return makes you have a higher interest rate, which in return costs you more to borrow money, right? So you're just getting slammed on every different direction, that's why the town, Board of Selectment, FinCom, we've always had a pretty good appetite of rebuilding our stabilization and getting it back to the ten percent, twelve percent area, and that's, that's key to it. I mean, there's, there's gonna be times where you might have to tap it, but it's definitely not for budgetary reasons, right, it's for one-time expenditures, so, again, I would discourage, I would be all for if somebody said, "Hey, you know, we have this project, and, you know, we need a million dollars in rainy day fund, that's what it's there for, whatever, we took a million to go do something that was gonna be, you know, a bigger project, a capital project, that's one thing, but not, definitely not for budgetary reasons."
I'll go back to dating myself, in nineteen ninety-eight, when I first got elected to this board, we had like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in stabilization, and we worked hard, and Mr. Gasper came on, on the finance committee, and we, our goal was to, to hit the million dollar mark, like that was a huge goal for the town, and I remember that was a, we, we did a lot of, you know, pretty draconian things, like we didn't allow spending at fall town meetings for like two, three years, and then we hit that mark, because we knew we were gonna build additions and renovations to the school, so, and we had other projects coming on, so we spent two and a half decades of really good fiscal practices, and now's not the time to deviate from that, so. Yes?
Mr. Gasper's very correct, but it's not only what you have in the bank in stabilization now that affects your bond rating, it's also the fact that you have to continue to contribute year after year, and I congratulate this board, because when I got here, stabilization was in good shape, but OPEB, which is another liability, wasn't, and this board has made sure that they're well above the million dollar mark, they took it out of the state system, which was costing you money, and put it into a system now that is making you money. You have an infrastructure stabilization account. You are in very, very good shape with the bond houses, and I think, I congratulate this board in putting it that way, because when I got here, you were not in that good a shape.
Got it, great, thank you. All right. Let's say that, we did Buzzards Bay, item number nine, assessment delegation letters, gentlemen. This is regarding the police department.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one note that I really, when we started doing this when I was the chair, it was pretty clear that I didn't think the wording of the chair of the Board of Selectmen-
Mm-hmm.
-should be in there.
Mm-hmm.
My recommendation on both of these, where it drops down under number one, where it'll be, the department will be assigned to the chair of the Board of Selectmen or their designee. I think, no matter who the chair is, myself, Mr. Gasper, Mr. Warner, I don't think it should be put on one person.
On the board.
I would much rather have this say, assigned to the Board of Selectmen or their designee. That gives us an opportunity to discuss it as a board-
Fair enough.
And we can- And we can decide who the designee is. That's just my recommendation on both of them, if that's possible. I don't think it's a drastic change that HID will complain too much about. Just remove the chair and then this way the Board of Selectmen can make the decision at a future meeting when it comes to it.
That's a good build.
Mr. Chairman, so we, this has been an ongoing mess with civil service, HID, whatever you want to call it, going back and forth to figuring out what these delegation letters say and how they read and everything else. And I still don't, I could read through this, I get it, right? The problem, when I talked to Mr. Kelly and he gave me a copy, I said, give me a copy of these things. It wasn't in my book. I got some copies, I think it was last week when I was with Mr. Kelly. And I said, I need to see both of them. So one's for a police chief, one's for a deputy police chief. There's a problem. So when I put these, I read through the first one, deputy police chief. And then I grabbed the police chief one and I was reading through and I'm like, hmm, this sounds, this all sounds very familiar. So then I laid them side by side, pretty much word for word, they're identical. So I don't really know what the delegation letter is doing for us, but I will say this. What I did notice, because they were identical until I got to section four. It says, HID delegates responsibility form on a delegation administrator, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, designee and assessment center vendor. But what I noticed, I wrote, this is wrong. So it goes six. It says on section four, it goes six. The next page says six, seven. In the deputy chiefs, seven is nine, six is nine, seven is 10. But seven and eight are missing from the chief's delegation letter. And I would just ask Mr. Kelly is, am I looking at the copies that came from HID? And if so, why are two, only two provisions in the police chief's delegation missing? They're numerically wrong. So I don't know if somebody else has done something with these delegation letters. Do you have this? Do you have, in the, in the, this is the police chief one. See, it goes six and then it says six and seven. See, I wrote seven. I don't know if he, it says the same, but he just gave me these last week and like I said, it's missing. And I would, again, it's unfortunate that we don't get to have that conversation with the Regina Cagriano lady. But I don't think it's a big deal. I just think they need to be the same. And then I guess when we go to assessment center for an RFP, Mr. Kelly, do we do something different? Or is this what the assessment center is going to work off of is the delegation letters? Because is it really behooves to do both? If they're both identical, why, I would ask the question, why if they're two different positions? And if they are, wouldn't the board, wouldn't it be smarter if they're going to be identical? In the exercise, delegation letters are supposedly supposed to be identical. If, if they're identical, wouldn't it be smarter for us to save the money on the assessment center end of it? In the cost for our department that is participating in this? Why wouldn't we just say, go for chief, duty assessment center. Whoever's number one gets chief, whoever's number two gets deputy chief. If they, I don't know what, what role this delegation letter really plays later on down the road.
The civil service looks at it as two separate positions. Even if you have one assessment center with additional exercises for one position that you don't have for another position. The, the delegation letter was described to us when we first talked to Ms. Cagriano's assistants as being the first step in a form letter. I can ask why the differences between the two, but.
I, I would.
The delegation letter delegates the authority to run the assessment center to the board.
That's fine. I, so I guess my question would be on the, this one's, the one I'm saying is incorrect. Only incorrect to the deputy chief one, seeing how everything's identical. I don't know if they would make this kind of a mistake where they number one through six and then the next page they go six and seven. And then they're missing the real seven and eight from the deputy chiefs. You follow me?
Yep.
So what's on our sheet, number six and number seven, which I have identified as seven and eight in numerical order, it's really number nine and number 10 in the deputy chief. So they're missing the six and seven from the deputy chief. And six and seven, develop the job simulated content valid exercises that will be used during the assessment center for which validation evidence has been gathered in accordance with professionally accepted guidelines. Develop a security plan that will be utilized to ensure the integrity of the assessment center. I'm pretty sure those two shouldn't be excluded from either one of these delegation letters, but it is.
It could be that it was excluded because we got them at different times, substantially different times. Could also be excluded because it's an omission on their part or they assumed that since they were told that very likely the assessment center would be run for both positions at the same time. That they put one in and didn't put the other. We can call tomorrow and.
We need clarification on, I, I wouldn't think that those two could be excluded.
No.
Period. I think those are two important attributes to the delegation letter, right? So that needs to be figured out and corrected. And.
What a crappy system that's on.
It's been, it's been horrific, right? We waited this long for them to get their act together and then we get this and I'm looking at it going, are we kidding ourselves right now?
And they're all working remotely. So you've got to get ahold of them.
What is, what agency is this following?
Civil Service.
I know, but there's got to be like, who's the? You should talk to our state rep. This is crap.
I agree with that statement as well. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can figure that out, Mr. Kelly's going to get ahold of Ms. Regina. I'll just call her Ms. Regina.
Oh, her assistant, yeah. Ms. Chung.
I know you've dealt with multiple people and that could be part of the problem, not the solution, right? So we have a number here to contact Regina. I'll call her Ms. Regina. I think we need to talk to her to see why this mess up was made and if it was made by HID first. And then I have more important question to ask Mr. Kelly. Where's the funding source for the assessment center?
We most likely would go to the reserve fund once we get the bids in and see what, what the source is for next year. Because you do not know what a dual assessment center is going to cost.
I thought we had talked about like somewhere around 10 grand.
That was.
15 or 20. So that's the problem, right? And I, I grabbed the warrant and I haven't even gone through everything word for word. Usually I'm much further ahead to be prepared for town meeting. But when I was looking at this, it's triggered thoughts in my head and I'm like, wait a minute. We didn't discuss an article for an assessment center. And I went through this and there's no article. And I don't know the legalities. We'll have to figure this out as collectively as a board to get this to happen. But using the reserve fund, because that's the first thing I thought of is, I don't know if that's an appropriate use. Because it's hard to say it's an emergency or unforeseen. And that's usually what the criteria is for reserve fund transfer. So we have a much bigger picture to be looking at now when we do things and figure out a funding source and what that amount is. I think when we go off for the RFP, we just did one several years back. I know it's in the basement somewhere. I'll probably be here tomorrow going through the basement because I'd like to see what the old delegation letters were compared to this one and what we, what hoops we jumped through and what the process was. I talked to the former, former chief and he told me everything's been, all the records in the cellar have been cleaned up. There was Chief Owles and Ms. Leonard, our administrative assistant at the time, that cleared through all the police files and did a, put them in an orderly for civil service and things of the such. He said, so it should be pretty easy for us to find it. So I don't know. It just seems, it just seemed to, I don't know how this process ended up being so twisted and convoluted. I think Mr. Warner has alluded to that, all the crap we've been through, but we didn't deal with this last time around. We really didn't. It was a pretty seamless process.
I've used it for fire chief and for town administrator when I was an HR director. And it's nowhere near as difficult as it is now. But you also have people that were in offices.
No, I get it. I, I.
I mean, when people are giving.
Warner, this is just a HID and all this miscommunication. I mean, we've been dealing with this. They told us back and I think what the former chief said something to us. In the summertime, it was somewhere July, August, that by September, they should have all of this done. And here we are sitting here, June, we're already in June, almost a year.
We also started with the chief and then we added the deputy chief. So. And they turned around at that point when we said we wanted the assessment center to be one for the two. They made us jump through a number of other hoops approving various documents concerning the deputy chief.
We're going to, we're going to, once we put it on an RFP and we bring in the assessment center, whoever it is, if it's Pomeroy again, right, from, I think it's Badge Quest. Mr. Copper is at Badge Quest. When we bring them in, we, I mean, really? We could be talking to these people and saying, look, this is what we're doing. They've been through this before. Duty assessment, what's the additional criteria from this or the last criteria from the police chief? Or do we just do what we, I just said, everything's all bundled into one and first pick, second pick and have a nice day? I don't, we're letting somebody else and I understand it's the civil service department, but we're letting these people stand out in front of us and delay, delay, delay. Quite honestly, I'm offended by it because I don't think it's fair to our department, right? And that's all I'm trying to speak on behalf of right now.
I don't think it's fair to anybody that, that happens. And you have to use people's cell phones to get ahold of them because they're not in the office.
All right. Let's head up tomorrow. Chairman? Next item, website and bylaws. We get an email from Pam today, just updating us. It's a work in progress. It's going to take some time, but it is something that's got her attention and they are working on it. So thank you Pam for that. HPI.
I asked if that be passed over because we were discussing it. I was with special counsel this afternoon and we're not sure it's necessary.
Okay. Very good. All right. Dan, sorry to make you wait. All righty. Review of matters presented. So Dan, at the last meeting, we had some questions regarding chapter 90.
Yeah, I want to apologize to the board. Actually, I wasn't aware of that meeting.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. As chairman, I'll take ownership of that. That's appreciated. All right. Gentlemen, you had some questions? Mr. Gasper?
I think we, Dan, we talked, because you weren't here, I mean, we've already, we've already approved. We talked about Middlefield. We already approved Mendel. I brought up a resident's concern about flooding and I know Ms. Inkley's, that's his pathway that he takes because he's out that way. And he spoke on some flooding issues. And I said, I'm kind of surprised because we just spent a decent amount of time putting storm drains on the west side of Mendel Road. And he said a lot of it was going to the east side now and over by where we discharge the ever source.
To Mendel?
So right in front, right in front of the ever source easement, essentially the house that's right on the corner there.
Yeah, I went by the other day too. I think a problem, I don't know if the owners or new owners of that other place, is it actually a basin that's in the field if you look over there?
Across the street?
Across the street from the, where Knox's house was or that's that easy? It was on the opposite side and there it was built up. So the water actually originally was going into that field, which has got a basin and then it goes under the road and crosses and goes into the, the power lines that way. So I did notice that the last time. So that's one of the things, again, it should be excavated out and that should take care of that problem in that area. Because that's actually all, that's two foot, 24 inch pipe. That was all engineered. We had GAF engineering design that hole from there and that's what we started from that point. We started over there because that originally was smaller pipe. I think it was like 12 inch in there originally. And we had to upgrade that to 24 inch before we could do that project that we did last year. So we had to upgrade that first, 24 and then went to 18 and the 15 and 12 where we're at now. But yes, I did notice that the other day and I think that is the issue. I don't know if that's an issue because I don't, where that property is and if that basin's on that guy's property. You know what I mean? I'm going to have to look into.
Whose responsibility is that property, or that basin?
Well, we've been taking care of. I get them all cleaned out when we're doing our basins.
Because there's like three, there's what, three or four new houses over there that are raised, right? Septic tanks and that's going to change that whole.
It changes.
Topography with all that building that's going on. I could imagine that's going to impact the runoff and where the water was going and.
Yeah. But if you watch, a lot of water comes down that, it's still on that same side more than the, I guess you'd say the west side comes on more than the east. But, and again, the other thing is you go down there sometimes, I mean, we can't clean every basin. We're over a thousand basins. I do try to send, that was like a three and a half inch storm that came out there. And a lot of basins, you know, we couldn't clean all. So you know what I mean? It's nice if the residents do help out, went to the lab, grabs some leaves out of them or something that's in them. But unfortunately, that doesn't happen. But so that might be one of the issues. I can do some more shooting unless I have GAF back out there. He did the asphalt and I can have GAF engineering kind of maybe go down there and, I mean, he's the one who designed the system and make sure. That should have handled even that storm.
But Dan, we, we, so I remember when we first did across the road to the, with the one you're talking about, right?
Correct. 24 inch, yep.
And we went across the road, we did that one and then we worked from there up to Garrison Lake.
Correct.
And that's where the last phase, we stopped there. And then we just recently, in the past year, went from Garrison all the way to the old fire towers.
Yep. And that's actually, that's working very well because that's where it used to cross over the road. We'd have no problems this winter. Well, again, the winter wasn't as bad as usual, but it wasn't an ice shrink out there.
Well, you always had three feet of ice on the west side of the road all winter long, whether it was sunny or raining or snowing. And it was, it was really nice this year. It worked out really well.
So Mr. Inkley is, I thought you were saying something about the flooding was on the east side. We put all the drains on the west side.
Oh, west side. I'm sorry. Yes.
We were on the west side.
Oh, you're saying it was on the opposite side of that?
So in front of the old Knox's house, in that big storm we had a couple of weeks ago, I stopped because I saw it. I actually had to stop because the road was completely flooded out at there. Right after, if you're heading south from Perry Hill, you get to Garrison, it starts curving a little bit and it actually dips down and then it goes back uphill right after that property with the field and the ever source easement. You couldn't see the road. It was completely flooded there and the water was actually rushing down the driveway so fast. It was hitting the.
Because it was that other side blocked and that's why it was able to do that.
I wasn't getting out of the car.
That's because it wasn't going into that basin that's on the.
Maybe we need to go look at that basin. It's the last basin because that basin discharges out to the easement.
Correct.
Right? So maybe we have to go and scope that pipe across the road. I mean, you could just stick.
Well, they put a fence up there and everything. That wasn't there when we did that drainage, you know, a few years back and they put, want to put a fence and I think.
I believe that's a new owner too because that house.
Address them and.
For sale sign too. So I'm pretty sure they sold it and now there's a new owner there as well. So they might not know anything about it. But.
But even on the east side though, we can actually adjust one because that's going to reclaim that road anyways. So I can. reclaimed that road anyways. So I can adjust the grade on that to make sure it's going
We talked about that last time.
I definitely can adjust. Because right now, I didn't realize the east was getting, but it might have been because of that. But when we grade that road, I can make sure that's all getting to them basins.
Dan, question for you. If this is if I'm off the rung, if I'm on the wrong track. But like major thoroughfares, like Mendel, Matapoiset, especially Matapoiset, we are seeing building taking place in areas that wasn't building, right? So just on Mendel, you got these three new houses.
Keen Road is another one.
So should we be like some way coordinating with either planning or the building department to get you involved? Like, so when a house, when a proposal, something that was a vacant lot, that was basically wooded area becomes, air quotes, a buildable lot, especially on these major roads, should we be coordinating with DPW?
It would probably be a good idea.
Just to see how it's going to impact drainage or what the building plan is.
It definitely
The big the big problem, the big problem with that is stormwater bylaws. And under the stormwater, even under the state stormwater bylaws, it excludes single-family dwellings. And that's been a problem of ours. We've been dealing with this these issues for decades now. And I've made comments about it. You've heard it before, Selectmen Wonha, that, you know, that that's the reason why these roads are flooding out because people are buying lots that were vacate, just land, and then they've raised their properties, as you just alluded to, you know, the two, three feet above grade now where the road is, the waters can't just go down anymore and go into the woods like it used to. I mean, people's yards are raised. But under the stormwater bylaw, they're exempt, single-family dwellings. I don't know how we get around that, but it's been this has been an ongoing issue. And unfortunately, we we're running out of a lot of developable land. So it's something that I was kicking my feet about a while back years ago.
A few issues with that. Mother Nature ain't been cooperative either. It's it's we get hundred-year storms every three weeks instead of every hundred years now. So that's a big thing. I think raising water tables is an issue. So in the drainage, even with back in the day, is not sized properly. That's why we're doing Slocum over. That's a twenty-four inch. Now we're throwing thirty-six in there. You know what I mean? It's it's not enough to handle what Mother Nature's bringing at it. So this is there's a bunch of and I did shoot grades, especially like on Keen Road. That's another one. I mean, I got twenty-five chambers in the ground. I got a six-inch overflow pipe, which it can't handle a two-inch storm. It ain't handling a three and a half. So that six-inch pipe, that's the biggest pipe I can go because it was level going all the way to Wood Duck. I didn't have enough pitch. It was that's it, level. It just couldn't handle a three and a half inch. And I did shoot grades over there as well. And you could get rid of that water. It'd have to go north into a culvert, but it'd be like a twenty-foot cut to do. And that's something we didn't even get the equipment to do that type of project, you know what I mean, to get rid of that water. And again, it would be another design and and, you know,
Most of that, so most of it. And I know you said we have roughly a thousand storm basins, right?
Yeah.
But a lot of the town is what they call country drainage, where it just bleeds off to the side of the road. But again, when you experience that kind of development, people's yards are raised. I mean, one house on Keen Road that I go by, it's a beautiful house. Multiple houses on the east side of the road. They're beautiful homes, and you drive by in a big rainstorm. He's got like an electrical box out front right by the roadway, and it just it's a it's a pond. And I'm like, I'm shocked that he doesn't raise that area up two or three inches to get some of that water off. But where's it gonna go? It's gonna go off to the street, right? But I noticed his that gentleman's yard, these beautiful houses, beautiful yards. And you drive by after a big rainstorm like today when it was downpouring, I guarantee you, he's got six inches of water in his yard. It's just it's nuts. There's electrical box sitting out there. So
At the white house on the right?
Yeah, it's beautiful. I mean, a beautiful, all three of them are beautiful homes, but it's just it's a nature of the beast, and it's country drainage. And we spend a fortune doing it.
So Dan, going back to That was another guy's in Garrison. I remember that was when I first started here, where I was one of the projects. And that was big flooded out at the bottom of Garrison. We want to building up the road there, raising the basins, redoing that detention area. And that's how we
So going back to the Mendel Road problem.
Yes.
We're gonna we're gonna look at that drain, right? But when we were talking about it last time, when you weren't here, I said, well, before we go and pave the road, Dan's gonna there's the reclamation process, right? It digs up a foot of the road. I said, so normally when we pave a road, it's a two percent pitch, right? They call it in the bid specs, two percent pitch. So before you went out and put anything to bid, do we have to do in the bid specs, when you put it out to bid, do you say, you know, a three percent pitch only going one way?
No.
So the road slopes, or the water's gonna go towards our drains?
They're gonna go on the DPW direction on that, a lot of stuff, and for grading and stuff like that. So if I put out the grades, they gotta go to a I do their road grader will do what what we put out there for grades.
I know. That's what I'm trying to say. But when we put for paving to the pitch, right? We usually
See, like, once they reclaim it, the road grader will put the road to where we want to put it. The pavement's just put into what the road grader does. So whatever asphalt, because that's what you want. You want, you know, if we're gonna go four inches, it makes like most likely wool.
Yeah, base and then top.
They're just gonna put it. And that's why it comes out. You want a road grader to do it so you get a smoother road, like a lot of this stuff that we were doing, you know, we're doing with the ski steers, not the
Yeah, no, no, I get it. I'm just we're just trying to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, no, no. Before that, before that, get paved. And if there's a problem east side, and again, if I get any questions, I can only bring you GAF, you know, because you definitely want to design that.
Just that little area, too, like where it kind of kicks up towards Matapoiset, comes down, there's a little valley.
Comes both ways, actually.
Correct, yeah. From Garrison, then from Matapoiset side, it's kind of just
Yeah. But I think a little bit is when that guy put up that fence and stuff, I think he built that up because that was to take that water in that area, and it was and it dumps it across the street. So
The previous homeowner that owned that property, I remember being out there with you. We we had that conversation, and he was all about putting that there to help him out.
Yeah. Well, he actually worked for town, too. He used to work for town, Matapoiset. The guy that used to live there. I don't know who it does now.
We'll have to figure we'll have to figure that out. But it's just to put on your
Definitely make sure that gets straightened out before we before it gets paved.
All right, anything else in the
Dan, you brought up, we talked about Middlefield, and then I informed the board that you and I had talked about Northfield because it lies off Middlefield.
Correct.
You asked me to go out there, take a look at that. And I informed the board that the whole road's spider webbing, and it would take one more frost season, and it would be just as crappy as Middlefield. So I encouraged the board to, you know, let's look at that while we're there. It'll be cheaper for us to do both of them, like you had said, to get them over there and do it while we're out there.
Kind of part of it. It's on the same road, and you do one, you might as well, because the other one, just like you said, it's it's a year away of being just as bad. So while they're in there, I think that's the cheaper, cost-effective way to go at that one.
I'll make a motion to approve Mendel Road, Middlefield Place, and Northfield Place as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, good stuff. All right, Keen Road and Wood Duck, we just kind of touched on that, right?
Yeah, I don't know what, because Dan, he went back after I showed him the picture, and Dan busted my chops and said, who shows me a picture of a board going across a patch? I do. You got the picture, right?
Yeah.
So Dan was, he was a wise guy, and he sent me a picture of a board across when he was done. So he went back out there and fixed Wood Duck, the patch that we the trench where he's talking about that stormwater pipe. So he did do that. We'll see how that holds up now. And we'll just have to monitor Wood Duck from now on. Keen, he kind of updated us on Keen. It just it's just not taking on all that water. It's the two-inch storm, the two-inch storm, and it works.
Yeah, it did work. So and it was taking all the water. That three and a half, it did not. So and again, we even popped that manhole, and that six-inch pipe was just full pipe, and it's just not big enough to handle what what's thrown at it. So
Okay. All right, Hay Street, I don't think we need to go there. Sounds like, I don't know, we haven't heard from the homeowner there. Regarding potholes, Dan, as we, you know, as I talked to Kathy, I know you guys are doing a lot of work filling potholes. Thank you for Lake Street. Came out great.
I'd like to do more like that. It's just doing it that way is it's just cost is one. In the world, it's more manpower. It takes a lot of manpower to do that. I need the excavating, the paving, the rollers, trucks. And I'm using my whole crew. And it's, you know, we got guys out and this and that. And I just don't have the guys, the manpower to do everything. And we got, you know, you'll have, I still have a ton of water work. We got, you know, it's sewer pump stations, this, that, there's there's so much to do. And like even now, I got one water guy, really. The other guy, John, he's retired. One guy's out. And Eric, he's kind of gone all the time. He's doing meter replacement programs. So it's kind of, I don't have the manpower. So I'm even throwing like highway guys up and with water for now. And we still got flushing to do is, you know, hydrant flushing, gate valves, exercising, you're gonna vacuum all in boxes out, it's paint, even all the caps. We didn't even take the hydrant flags off. We're gonna use to that by now, too. So it's, like I said, it's kind of, I'll just give you a little hint. I had somebody like work orders the other day. Because we got work orders for potholes is huge. We got
I would say to the resident
Yeah.
And to us, like pothole, like if there's one thing that people, when it comes to DPW stuff, well, they might not realize, like, you're flushing all this stuff out. It's not a very sexy item to them. But when you're driving
No, I agree.
In your car, bang, bang, when you see it, that's the stuff that I think the taxpayer goes, what the heck, right? So what is there anything that we can do to help you guys? Either like, is it asking another talent to come in? And we like, is there a way to or just kind of, is there anything we can do to help you?
Would be great, but I'm not sure on that, Mr. Wonha.
Think about it. Because I know you got a process in place. I know you guys do a lot of work.
Well, I mean, we get them at the office. We get, but I get, if you guys see the work orders, I get the work orders. I told you the other day, I'm like, the guys, what are you gonna do today? I said, well, let's toss a coin. Whatever one it lands on, we're doing that. Dan was actually behaving, I said, we're gonna not behave, but
Two to the
Two to the
We need to deal with that as well as another subject matter. But, you know, he needs employees, right? We got a missing one guy's retiring, so we got to put an advertisement out for that person and do whatever we need to do. But it isn't
And it's tough. The other thing I want to give you guys, it's just people with licenses too. So now, like, the brush cutter, again, that don't stop, too. It's it's a thing I could send that guy out there every single day. I can't do that either. I got one guy with a license, and that's it for that piece of equipment. So I got like a couple, two guys with CDLs besides me. It's it's tough having drivers. It's it's just difficult.
And if we can't drive it out, like we went to Keating or one of these companies that we've dealt with, do they have like pothole crews that just go around and bang, 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 you know, bang these things out? Some of the things that require major surgery, obviously, that's something else. But
I mean, you're doing right to cut, you know, you should be cutting them out, digging them out.
Yeah. So there's a way, there's a right way to do it, and there's a wrong way to do it. And unfortunately, because of our manpower, we we have to continue doing things the wrong way, which is cold patching, right? And I think what
Or we'll use hot mix, but even that, you're throwing them in, you know, you should be cutting these things out because it'll pop out. If you're just throwing it in the hole.
So what, Dan?
Sometimes it's if the hole's wet or whatever, it just it's
We talked about
Cut them out, dig them out, or do like I just did on Lake Street.
That's right.
Do a big, because it's a big session. Just cut it out, dig it out, put it up. And we did that in two lifts, you know what I mean? So again, it's time consuming. It's it's more manpower. It's and unfortunately, that's where I'm at with that. I mean, let me think about this and see if I can come up with a solution. And maybe you guys can't help, or maybe it's
Figure that out. I think, like, you know, I mean, geez, like, if we talk about when we talk about one-time expenditures, right? Like, to me, that's a good use of money that if we're gonna tap into free cap or something like that, it's boom, you know, fix it. Because that's what people care about.
No, I agree.
Politicians have made a career just for the potholes.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So Dan, when he did, we talked about, and I'm glad that you had kind of gone on him to do it, too, because we talked about that crappy patch on Lake Street that's been bugging me for, we talked about it like a year ago. So when I finally seen it done, I'm like, oh, kudos, we finally got that done. But I told him, I said, that's not, I said, that's not something that we just, you know, cold patch over. I told him, you need to dig it out, right? And because of his limited manpower, I mean, and and some of them, they just don't have the expertise. And Dan's got to be there overseeing projects like that, right? I mean, technically, I can give you the answer, right? He needs a small milling machine. If he had a small milling machine, not one of those gigundo ones, but for for doing patches like that patch, we'll talk about that size patch, preferably, I'd like to do curb to curb. That's why I always tell him, when you patch, curb to curb. And that's okay, because the other side of the road was okay, and he limited with manpower. But if you add one of those small milling machines, instead of doing the cold patch crap, you have a rough area, like certain zones on Middle Road and certain zones on Main Street, and a lot of other places, he could go with a mill and just overlay, and it's a lot better than cold patching bottles because it only lasts long.
It's definitely a thing. I think we kind of reviewed this though back in the past. And like, just for one of them small ones, they're like five hundred thousand dollars. And this was, this was years ago. So I don't even know, like, the ones at PJ Keaton are over a million, and milling machines they got that really, but that is the way to go. You mill it, and then just now you only, it's actually because now you don't have to dig it out, you don't have to do two lifts, and it ain't as much time because the milling's faster. And now I'm only putting a two-inch of mix on top to make it nicer, too. So it's definitely a way to go. But is that something like y'all looking into? Do we put something like that out to bid, and I do sections and just have Keating come in and mill it and then
Well, that conversation
I mean, that might be, just because them machines are so expensive. And again, it takes, you know, you're gonna be pretty good, and you're gonna have a few guys on that piece of equipment as well to run it, you know, so
Okay. Just wanted to raise the issue.
Definitely
While you're at it, I think in front of Town Hall, there's a little
You're talking about the hallway in the building?
No.
Because that's cold.
But anyway, Dan, the point is, like, I know you guys are busting it, and that's that was part of this, too. I want people, I want people to understand that you guys are really working, you know, you guys are putting a lot of effort in, you know, so
Thank you. Appreciate that. We try. We try to do what we can with what we have, you know.
And the last item is offsets for golf. You guys did some work over there. So we just gotta get that billing, get it to the golf course.
Usually I, Kath, I give her all the info. What we do is hours, all the materials, everything. We did that last time. I don't know if
Again, Dan, a lot of this stuff is just public awareness. We want people to know that you did the work, and we're gonna, the golf course is gonna reimburse you guys. So this way, there's no question whatsoever. I was there. The work you've done, place looks awesome, you know, I've been
It's in the way I look at it, too, because this time of year, it kind of, it's a feeling because we run lower on our funds, our budget. So it's kind of, it's helping the town course out. We figured, and and we're getting something out.
I just, I have one simple request, is we need to make sure that the paperwork's in because we need to get it in before the end of the fiscal year.
Yep, I'll get it in to you guys.
A week before the end of the fiscal
No, I'll get it in.
So if you can get it, if you can get it in, and I think we might, does the board need to approve any of this stuff? We should have technically done it prior, but
Is it next week? Kath's out this week? And I know I gave her all
So next week, when Kath, I know she's on vacation as well. So when Kath comes back, and we just make sure that she runs, we used a labor number last year that enabled labor number increases a little bit because of cost of coalers.
Yeah.
So we'll come up with a different, she can just do that recalculation, right?
Yep.
And then whatever time that you put on the iron materials and all that stuff, and then we can process that through, and we can backcharge before the end of the fiscal year.
We'll have it next week?
Thanks, Dan. Keep up the good work.
You have a good night.
Thanks.
All right. We do have three executive sessions, and we are not going to come back in open session. So does any selectmen's announcements?
Town meetings next Monday night, seven PM.
Um, no, I don't.
All right. Well, I've been told, I guess this weekend is Father's Day.
Oh.
For all you dads out there, Happy Father's Day. Dads, uncles, mentors, brothers, you know, filling the roles. And dads come in all different shapes and sizes and, you know, fill and avoid many of them.
Happy Father's Day to my two colleagues.
Same here.
Kelly, I do, actually. So you hit Father's Day, but I do because I spent this weekend at my niece and nephew's graduation party, and I noticed that there was a lot of them, a lot of activity on graduation parties. And every year around the early June, I always say congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty-five. And for everybody out there that's listening, please be careful for pedestrians, people getting in and out of cars. Some of these roadways are pretty narrow. So just be conscientious that there's a lot of graduation parties going on, and just be conscientious of all your speed when you're going down these roads. So we don't have anything bad happen to anybody in our community. So just be careful. Congratulations, class of two thousand twenty-five.
Good call. All right, first executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining athlete. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair, sir, declares that the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. It's our motion to go into And the chair so declares and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session, is there a motion to go into executive session number one?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper.
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley.
Yes.
I'm a yes. We'll, uh, executive session number two, executive session of the Mass General Law, chapter thirty-A, section twenty-one, subsection A two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session, is there a motion to go into executive session number two?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper.
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Executive session number three, executive session of the Mass General Law, chapter thirty-A, subsection twenty, uh, section twenty-one, subsection A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, police contract. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares and the board will not return to public session at, session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session number three?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper.
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley, yes. I'm a yes, we are now in executive session.